This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the SDU ESD. Senator Sorey, I serve as chair and we can kick things off. So our first agenda item is possible leaders, so I would invite them to stand.
The president, the president of the United States Center for Interschool Choice, and two of our colleagues, who wish to stand, is one nation under God, and the people with the petition just for all.
Folks, uh, second agenda item is public comments. We do have a couple folks from, uh, if anyone cares for sure, but. Hey Marielle, would you like to stand and say who you are? Thanks.
I'm Marielle, and I'm going to be here. And I just wanted to let you all know that principals at Molly Stark and at Bennington Elementary have met with us and you, there you go. We both have met with us and we've identified some projects that we think we should do together over the rest of this school year and into next school year. So we are really looking forward to that and um, we'll be back to tell you what you know how it went. But we've been welcomed with open arms and with really fabulous opportunities that we think the community can help with.
Fantastic, thank you. Anyone else for public comment? I don't see anyone participating online.
Yeah, they do. There are people here, names I don't know, that could be the public if they wanted to speak, that hit the reaction button down below or just unmute themselves. Okay, I don't see any.
That brings us to our third agenda item, which is the consent agenda, which was posted, a pretty level consent agenda, with the exception of resignation and a nomination. I say that first saw the, the name of the resignation and I caught my breath for a second, but I see it's with the double B that you wrapped something down though. Uh, so I've been entertained a motion to approve the consent agenda, please. Thanks, uh, any discussion on approving the consent agenda? Are you not all those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand? Aye. Jeff, are there any opposed, any sent just, and motion carries. Thanks. The report is the, is the finance with the treasurer's report, which I don't recall if it was posted this afternoon or not, and piano donation, uh, to Monument. So Director Gordon, would you like to speak to us about A and B, please? You know what, you know what A was posted on?
I just.
It's not appeared, it's not in. Okay, thanks, yeah. Um, so we will, we will not take any action on the treasurer's report, but we will turn to the piano donation.
And Jim, Donna's not, Donna Colley's not here, right? You don't see her?
He is electronically, she just.
Professor Colley, can you say something about the piano donation, please?
Yes, of course. Um, so we did have a community member reach out to our music teacher who um, no longer wanted their family piano. Music teacher came to me. Our AIM group, Adults Interested in Monument, um, kind of scooped up supporting that. Um, they wanted a reduced price for the piano, I believe it was five hundred dollars. And so AIM actually did fund the purchasing of that piano. It's a beautiful, um, I think it's a, I don't know if it's a spinet, um, but it's a beautiful piano. The music teacher is thoroughly excited about it. Um, and the, the five hundred dollars was actually to move it. That was the cost. Um, because it's very expensive to move pianos and so they did support that. It's here, it's in our building, it sounds great, we tuned it. Um, that was also part of AIM's donation, so we're really, really very excited and grateful for them reaching out to us.
So the donor is essentially looking for us to just provide her with a, um, a letter acknowledging the donation and estimated value of twelve hundred dollars. It doesn't have any impact to the board or just accepting that.
Great, so I'm taking a motion to accept that donation as was read, thank you very much, you have a second? Chris, tell me the second. President, any discussion on that? Are you not all those in favor of accepting the donation for the piano, with the sigma five, I say aye, raising your hand?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Oh, no, okay, motion carries, thank you very much. So that's going to bring us to our school choice discussion. So some, some thought was put into sort of a working document to guide some of the conversation today. So I understand the superintendent has a feel of that, uh, working document to our building principals. So just to read some of these principles. It's a P L E S, principles, into the record. Um, in terms of the, the working definitions for how we're going to frame this conversation, really, we have two things. Uh, what we're calling right now, we're calling intraschool choice, which we're defining as an ESD student enrolling in an ESD school that happens to be outside of their home's attendance zone. And then what we're calling a non-ESD choice student, which is a non-ESD student who's still enrolled in an ESD school. So those are the two terms we're sort of going to be using, I hope, in this conversation. Intra-school choice and non-ESD choice. When it comes to, um, when it comes to sort of prioritizing how we're going to deal with this, uh, I think there are a few values that we need to. I think we need to clarify our values as a board, and this is what I suggest we start with, in terms of a, of a, of a ranking, in terms of priority. But when it comes to students who are applying for school choice, one or the other, uh, the priority would be given to ESD students with a sibling already attending the requested school. The second choice would be given to ESD students without a sibling already attending the target school or the kid that requests school. And the next four are non-ESD students. So the next priority would be given to non-ESD students who have a sibling placed, who had previously had a request granted. And a non-ESD student with a sibling placed who had not previously had a request granted. And the five in this list is a non-ESD student without a sibling placed who had previously had a request granted. The last one is a non-ESD student without a sibling placed who has not previously had a request granted. And here are some of the, the ideas that guided that, that proposed ranking. The first that we, we recognize that our responsibility as a board is to ESD students and families, as opposed to non-ESD students and families. Um, secondly, this board recognized the value of keeping siblings together when possible. And thirdly, that the board recognized that stability of school placement, um, is an important factor for student success. So those kind of, those three ideas are what guided that, that potential ranking. Um, and here's the protocol that, that I like for us to, to discuss with and use as a starting point. Uh, the number of requests for school choice to be considered by the superintendent's office will be the, the number of vacancies anticipated in the ESD schools for the, for the upcoming academic year. Uh, so essentially our principals will, will have an idea as to the, the number of vacancies they anticipate. I'll give that number to the superintendent and then by June first, the number of applications. Um, next, that requests will be granted via a lottery draw for each of the six categories listed above, um, that I just mentioned. So then all requests to meet the criteria for priority level one will first be drawn, and then if there are any vacancies left, all requests to meet the priority, the criteria for priority level two will be drawn, and so on, and so on, and so on. Uh, a student applying for intra-school choice, so it's an ESD student looking to go to a different ESD school, uh, who has their request granted, will be able to remain in that school until they graduate from the elementary room. Um, so once they're there, they'll stay there. But a non-ESD student who has a request granted, uh, will have to reapply each year. So there is no guarantee for a non-ESD student that the school that she or he or they may be, may be attending one year will necessarily not be able to attend next year. Uh, so that's, you know, part of the risk and potential reward that parents are going to have to gauge when they, when they apply for this. Um, and finally, the applications for those anticipated vacancies must be received by March first. So, um, in accordance with open meeting law, that information was shared with each of you electronically separately to, to allow for some conversation, but not conversation in a forum. Um, so if any of you are feeling confused during that, it's in your email.
I couldn't.
Um, so it's out there, um, most of us have read that, and I would just open the floor for, for comments on that.
So I'd like to know how many students each year actually apply to other schools, if we have.
I, I don't have that number. Jim, do you have, Superintendent Culkin, do you happen to have the number?
Uh, not in front of me, no. Um, but I, and Laura and I go over this together. I want to say there were under thirty applications last year, does that sound about right, Laura?
She's shaking her head, yes.
Yes, okay, okay, I saw them, and so, yeah, it's under thirty. And we've never, we've never exceeded that number, last year was probably the most we ever received.
And is that predominantly in Shasburg?
Uh, this year it was, but, or actually, you know, last year, but it hasn't, it's been Monument, uh, also. More requests from, actually, there was more, uh, I mean, there, there are, there were more openings in Shasbury, so that's why it became more prominent and, um, impacting, um, Monument. I probably gave more rejection letters to people who were requesting Monument because the, the classes were already full, less openings. I did.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I did send a document to the principals and I asked for their comments response, and I mean, they were, they were varied. There's no consensus among, among your principals. We also are blessed to have them all here, just even for the budget, but we have, I have principals who feel the program should be eliminated. I have principals who feel that it should be continued, but with restrictions. I have principals who believe that there should be a sibling, um, preference, and I have principals who believe that it should remain the way it was, that, you know, it's truly a lottery and there's no preference given to a family member front of the school. It's, it, it just, it's one of the risks that comes with, um, going with school choice. I have heard, um, some strong points that, um, that there's an equity issue with this, uh, and it, and implies that, um, we should be improving, let me get, I wrote some quotes down. Um, we should focus on supporting learners at their own schools of attendance and, uh, and, uh, that, that, that's what we should be focusing on, improving all schools and not focusing, but, um, like I said, no consensus from the principals, want to eliminate, want to continue, want kind of indifferent, want to continue with restrictions. Um, one to continue with the provision that it could be revoked for attendance. That was a reoccurring, um, question from principals because of the transportation issue. Could we revoke school choice, which we have never done? But if we continue it, could we revoke it if a student was not coming to school, frequently had high attendance issues or tardiness? And the issue, um, potentially is transportation, where if they went back to their sending school, their, their, their school of residence, they would have transportation available to them. So, um, again, no consensus. Um, so I, it's really, I don't know if that helps, hurts, hinders?
I had, I, just a couple of thoughts. Um, when we first had this discussion several months back, there was a, there was a pretty strong feeling that maybe the, the school choice thing was bigger, got bigger and more complex than we wanted it to be. And perhaps the best course of action would be to retract, go back, you, you go to the school where you, where, where the paperwork says you belong. Um, with the exception of the people who are grandfathered or who have already started down the process, families who have already started down the process. Keeping them there, keeping their siblings there, but, but after they've aged through, it's all. Um, that's one option, that, that option can make a lot of, a lot of sense to me. I have also, um, I thought about me adopting what's written, but also stating that students who have, who are currently having a, have a sibling attending a certain school in district or out of district, they continue, just because we got our act together and finally decided to address it as a board, I don't feel like there should be a hardship put on a family that's already started in that process. So let that, let them move through and then the, the, this process as written goes. And then, um, the other part of that, that I would, that I would say, were we to do this, would be, end it or, or, um, striking the line that says out of districts need to apply every year. I just feel if you get them in, they've got their school, they've got their teachers, they've got their friend, just keep them through that process, don't make them reapply over here and go through the anxiety. They need to be pulled out, that would be my, my suggestion. I, I don't feel like I could support it as it was, exactly as it was written. Um, or it to come to vote, right?
So Scott, just for clarity, are you, would your first hope be to just get rid of school choice altogether? That was the first option you spoke to.
That was the first option I spoke to, because it's the one that's, it's, it's in my mind from the last, from the first time we had this conversation. We got, you know, it, it, there were, there were a lot of kind of holes in what we had established. Um, a lot of, a lot of anxiety that this was creating for families. It was, it was a way for us to just kind of say, it's time to move on. If we have that, we have this extra layer of, I'm just going to call it, 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 with the out of district students, with people, with kids from North Bennington being thought of as out of district students. Especially in the town of Shasbury, where some of those kids are residents of Shasburg. It's confusing, people don't understand it, the lines were drawn decades ago, people don't understand them. And that's why I'm, I, that's why I don't like the, the, the issue, the, the differences being so drawn, the lines, and the differences being drawn so hard from in district and out of district. Because really, when we're talking about out of district, we're talking about people who live right over there. It's just a fear.
Mr. Chairperson, if I, I could say, the superintendent, uh, is in agreement with Scott's first statement. If I had my preference, we would suspend or eliminate this program. I think that, um, for me, the concern is equity. Um, transportation, if you cannot transport your child, then you can't take place in this. And as a public school, I, I, I have some concerns about that. And some of the other, I mean, I really condensed what the principal said to me, but some of the other things that I heard is like, keeping the capacity under what, what is stated, so that for later arrivals into their own district. I'm not sure how, and I'll go back to what Scott said, I love the word, the ick, Scott, those, those things, how do I say, sorry, twenty's the cap and they're at eighteen right now, I say, well, there's two seats left. No, we keep those seats open to see if somebody arrives who that is their school of preference. And, and I can see, especially in schools like Monument, where there is only one of every classroom, capacity really has, you know, hits, hits home because they can end up with some very large classes at the last moment. So, um, I think it, I think it was a, a noble idea, we tried it. Uh, we disappointed more people than I think we, um, pleased in the round last year as far as how many people we said no to. Um, and that sets up, you know, people to be, um, disappointed. And yeah, the North Bennington, um, Shasburg issue is something that predates all of us. Uh, and it's hard, Scott is absolutely right, it's hard for people to understand that it comes down to where you pay your school taxes, not really where you reside. Um, and back when we had independent school boards, Shasbury struggled with that, they had consulted with attorneys, they wanted to, they felt that historically that agreement ended when North Bennington Grade and School left, um, the issue when we became independent, so how can an agreement with a school that no longer exists continues? There's, that, it's never been settled, never been settled. And I know, um, the principal of Shasbury has always, uh, wanted to continue, uh, you know, I, he didn't in his remarks to me this time, but Jeff, in the past, you talked about a, you know, a preference given to, to, um, the Shasbury residents from the Shasbury ID district, for those who don't know that that's what that's called. Um, and it's, we don't have any provision for that, and then they, they, they may be Shasbury residents, but they don't pay school taxes to our school district. So it is, it is tough for people to understand. So with those reasons and quite a few more, I, I would not be opposed to suspending or, or canceling the program with the caveat that anybody's in it who stays, they stay in it throughout their terminal grade, and any family member also can attend, because I, I, I don't like the idea of breaking up families, but it would, it would be grandfathered out, not totally eliminated.
So I have a question. I have a question, so would students who are considered non-ESD that are in DCF custody, what options are available to them?
So I think the, I think there's a memorandum of understanding between our student families and the education that says that the student comes into, is ordered into the custody of the state of Vermont, that student gets to remain in their school, in their, their home school. Uh, that's correct. Regardless of where their foster placement may be, where their family is up, so I don't know that this would really affect kids in custody.
And transportation becomes the responsibility of DCF if they are, if they do want them to stay in, um, say, for example, Bennington Elementary, but they're living in Manchester.
In the Shasbury and North Bennington, I hear a number that they divided up when they had the new, um, or built up with the houses. And Shasbury was too full, could not take the kids, and that's why they went to North Bennington. When they built that up, so that's, that's where they drew that line.
But it's, yeah, it's a clean line, and we have houses that's the same side of the street that are, you know, pretty. That, you know, it's a mess. I mean, literally, like, one neighbor, you could have your grandparents, you have two houses together, the grandparents own one, the regular family owns the other, and they go to two different school districts. Um, because that line will cut one house out, you know, the good example is, um, Fran Kenny's house, that whole street is North Bennington except for Fran Kenny's. And it just, this is the only cutout, it's like, it's Shasbury, North Bennington, Shasbury, 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 North Bennington, North Bennington, Shasbury, and it's all on the same side of the road. It's not having a clean line, um, which makes it.
Makes it hard, but that's one of the reasons that they did that years ago, I can remember. It's because, because the school overcrowding and then all the new houses coming in, that they had to put the children somewhere.
One of the reasons we're looking at this as well is because the middle and high school have a tuition policy and we had nothing. So that was also a factor when we first started looking at this distinction. And then the other piece is, uh, there's also Woodford, who has students that tuition in and have three years from Searsburg. That's a whole different piece.
Yeah, it's a whole different thing, that's not the intraschool choice. Right, they've always had, well, you know that, they've always had tuition students from non-operating school districts.
Right.
So that, that would not be affected, regardless of what we decide, so I, I don't.
Because that's always been on a space available basis. You know, it's, it's open within the school.
But North Bennington's a non-operating school district.
Right.
Independent school, which is a non-operating district, and that the bylaws are if you live in that area, you have, they'll pay for you, you know, they'll allow you to go to school there, but you can take your money just like you're in Sandgate or any of those other non-operating districts.
And they do, Renee could tell you what those numbers are, how many from North Bennington are tuitioning somewhere, I don't know if she's got it off the top of her head, but we do, we have to track that, so. So North Bennington does write checks to, to us, they write checks to Grace Christian, to Sacred Heart, um, they work to Highland Hall, I don't know if they still are. Um, but yeah, the, not everyone from North Bennington goes to the village school by any means.
So it's still that consideration now, so I, if we don't have a policy that tuitions in, and we can say that those students that are currently in could still be grandfathered until they have matriculated out?
I, I think, I think we are mixing two issues, if I, if I could ask, I mean, we're, out of district tuition is, is there, we have, you know, we, we have an obligation, non-operating school districts have to send their kids some, somewhere. If we have an open seat, we can take those students. What we're really deciding is we're going to, are we going to continue to allow inter-school choice between the schools of, the six schools of the Southwest Vermont Union Elementary School District?
Which is a difference, which is a difference, but we have both pieces that we were considering way back.
Well, and it's like, and when I was, when I was drafting this as sort of a working document, I was envisioning that non-ESD kids certainly to address the North Bennington issue, but also kids who do come from operating school districts and who, who might want to come in. Because I think we would, we would have needed to address all the potentialities.
So, I mean, I'll honestly, I'll speak up, Chris, I mean.
Yeah, please.
My thought is that, you know, we have a policy on transportation that we must transport these kids. It's the same policy that applies to MAU. So if you're in Powno and want to go to Shasbury School, you know, that child should be transported. Um, it doesn't matter, MAU has the same thing. Um, if you're in Powno, you have the access, you have the right to go to MAU and have that bus paid for. So if we are an elementary school district, which is six schools, if a child from Powno wants to go to Shasburg and we allow that, I think we must provide busing. And we must provide buses, busing based on federal law. Um, because we're, we're allowed that kid to go to school, because our operating district is, you know, the elementary districts, all of our schools, it's not independent schools anymore.
But we do have tenant zones within, within the unified elementary district.
That's not what our policy says, Chris.
The policy.
The, the other, the difference is, it's not a, an, a fair comparison, because the, we're talking maybe one or two students from Powno coming to Bennington. Where the high school, the state law does not require us to provide transportation for everyone. Um, so there, the, the econ, and if, and if we want to provide transportation, the economics will collapse this program. To run a bus from Powno to Bennington and maybe Monument and maybe to Shasbury, and then one from Woodford and one from there. For how many students actually participate in this program? I don't see logistically how that happens and economically how that happens. With a high school, you have a busload of students that make the scale of economics work for that. And it's, it, it's a regional school district, uh, as we are, but they are a regional school district of one building per grade level, which we are not.
So, so they, but it's in two different schools though. So I mean, the MAU is sent to two different schools that are at different locations.
Right.
So why, why can't we send a kid from Powno to, you know, or Benel to Molly Stark, same distance? You know, but if you were in Benel, you'd have, you know, that could happen.
And you know, we're going, our next topic is budget discussion and transportation part of that.
And I think that's where I have a feeling that, you know, all these kids have access to go to MAU and they have public buses. If we want to allow this program to continue, we have to allow the busing to provide that opportunity every day. Exactly.
Right, I, well, I, I'd say that's why I feel it should be eliminated, because it's not equitable.
And I would agree, it's not equitable, and not all people have access to apply for these programs.
Two things, one, I think our superintendent addressed the fact that we're not required by law to transport them, just sharing. Um, and two, the sixth graders around Shasbury, Woodford and Powno, do they have the option now to go to the middle school?
Mm-hmm.
As far as a tuitioning in?
I believe they do.
Well, I don't know.
I, I don't have an answer though.
I don't either.
Yeah, I, I, I know, I think some kids have gone from Shasbury to the middle school.
Do you know, and spoke? I don't want to jump the block with you, are you?
Yeah, I mean, a sixth grader from Shasburg go to the middle school?
I only know, I only know of a student, student was in student services, their programming, like, that was student services.
That would be.
Yeah.
But that was a placement, not a choice.
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe there's a way for a Shasbury sixth grader to go to the middle school, a general class student. I don't think they have that option.
So they would not sit at Shasburg.
They would stay at Shasbury or Powno or Woodford, that's what I was going to say, those factors.
So is there any, are there any members in the board who feel stronger than we ought to be offering school trucks?
I have another question. So for clarification, students who are already enrolled in whatever school that they're in, they're going to be grandfathered into what's happening, or what do you mean?
Yes, that would be, that would be the recommendation, that anyone there stays there, and if they have a sibling that's coming up, I think we should, you know, as long as that child's in that school. Like where I would say probably not, if the, if the students in the fifth grade are going to be moving on and someone's coming up into kindergarten, no. But if they're, if they're both being in that same school at the same time, then they should be allowed to go so that we're not burdening that family. So, you know, it could take four or five years to completely phase it out.
And is there a list of students that will be grandfathered in?
Well, we could generate that, yeah, we would publicly share that.
No, not publicly share, but will there be like a list?
Yeah, we have the, we, we, the registrar knows who the school choice students are.
So with, with the idea being that we, that there would be some, some way for, for families to remain in the schools where their kids are attending right now? Is there anyone who feels stronger than we ought to be offering school choice beyond that?
I feel we should have a tuition in policy for those students who are out of the district, yeah.
So do we have, is, Jim, is there a policy that governs that?
It's an archite policy.
Okay. Okay, so, okay, so let's, uh, because, because we, I mean, we, we do need to have some kind of, you know, governing document that talks about how to be accept those students from non-operating school districts, sure.
I mean, you could draft, I would recommend you draft a procedure that the board votes on and maybe someday get it converted into a policy by the policy committee, because you could actually get your procedure approved a lot faster than you're gonna get a policy approved.
Sure. So let's, um, so.
Adopt the practice of what you want and what you feel about, but again, we're mixing.
Yeah, so let's put a pin in that, because that's important, Sandy, but let's, let's talk specifically about the intraschool choice right now.
Okay.
Sandy, yeah, please.
I, I have just a question. Um, I have a family that's been going, say, to Shasbury or Woodford. And, um, I feel that that family's done it for years where the next kid's coming into kindergarten, they're not, the rest of them have gone there, even though they're not there anymore, they might be going to sixth grade. I feel that family should continue going to that school and not stopping the next generation going to that.
Okay.
Is, is the way I feel, other than saying, okay, now you're gonna have to do school choice, you should be guarded person. Because your kids in the fifth grade and going in sixth, we don't have a child in there anymore.
Next generation or?
Yeah, that's what I mean, that's the next family member that's coming home.
No, that makes, that makes good sense, if you've got somebody who's just going from Shasbury, leaving to go to seventh grade at the middle school and there's a kindergartner that's following that same year, I,
Yeah.
it, it, it might extend the time that this lasts for, but.
What if they, what if they have a preschooler, where do you stop? Right, with, how, you know, how, where do you want to define that we stop? Because I'm asking not, as the administrator, who's going to have to administrate these rules? What's your wish?
As long as they're in the building. So let's, let's trump this, let's, let's trump this up, please, so, so. I'll ask the question one last time, anybody feel really strongly that we ought to be offering intraschool choice beyond the idea of grandfathering in those students who might already be in this bed?
Intra-school.
Intra, yeah. Very nice, so, that's good. So now, so let's, um, let's now talk about what's, the grand, you know, I keep saying grandfather, we all know what it is, like the grandparenting and.
For the record, do you need a vote that you're not going to have intraschool choice?
We're gonna get it, yeah, we're gonna get it, yeah. So, so now that we know for sure what we're talking about, um, this is what I would propose and I would ask for a motion to this end. That the SVU ESD suspend its practice of offering intraschool choice, period. Those students who have been grandparentsed in to intraschool choice, they continue. And for as long as that, those students remain in the building, any of their school-aged siblings who are also in the elementary years can also join them. Provided that the families can provide their own transportation. So I just wanted that, does that, does that feel like it covers all the bases?
I'd like that to be two separate motions.
Okay, go ahead and make those motions, go ahead.
Are you, I asked one, is, is this, I, I would like to know from Principal Johnson if this is heard now, I'm sorry. You're here, you're right across the street, and you have a lot of students that come to you, so I would just like your opinion on the policy.
Can I ask that you don't put the principal on the spot like that, or go through?
Sorry, sorry.
You know, I, I gave you a synopsis of what the principals said, I didn't, I purposely didn't identify individual principals who may have to deal with parents back at their schools about how they order, what they express. I'd rather have that directed to the superintendent.
Fair enough. Glenn, how would you like to make a motion?
I would like to entertain a motion that we will make the intraschool choice option going forward.
Okay, so we have, we have a motion, we have a second for that?
So we're gonna make two separate motions?
Yes.
Okay.
We're gonna create some carve-outs next, yeah.
Then I second that motion.
So first and a second, to eliminate all, to eliminate intraschool choice for the ESD with the understanding that there's another motion coming to create some carve-outs. So any further discussion on that? Very good, all those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, looks to be unanimous, okay, so the motion carries. Glenn, do you have another motion that you'd like to put forth?
I would put that up for a little more conversation as to the carve-outs per se.
Okay.
Um, because everyone's gonna have a leg to another.
So how about this, why don't we, why don't we say this? For those, for those students who currently enjoy intraschool choice, they may continue to do so until they reach their terminal grade. And for the remainder of the time that they remain in their current elementary schools, any of their school, any of their elementary school age siblings may also join them. Provided that the families can attain their own transportation.
We wanted the preschool children also to be out.
Do, do we want the preschool children? Do we? I would recommend you don't.
Yeah, because I, because.
Not every school has preschool.
Yeah, because the, the notion, it's in my mind, the notion is this, that keeping families together is what's important. And if there's a student who goes to, leaves for the middle school, and that student who is now entering kindergarten can go anywhere and they're never gonna be with their, with their sibling, because that sibling is already in the middle school. So then the news, the, the value of keeping sibling groups together in elementary school will be off the table if they don't have other kids.
But I was thinking of the student who might be in third grade and their younger sibling currently is a, in, is in the four-year program.
Yep, and so when that student moves to fourth and fifth grade, eventually they will.
They will stay.
They will stay, because at that point, it'll still be together at that point.
I mean, you, you should have overlapping students in the building at the same time. So if you're in Shasbury, it'd be your sixth grader and that kindergartner should be overlapped that year. And that's what should be occurring. It shouldn't be that preschooler who is in another program and that sixth grader in Shasbury, you know, I think at that point it doesn't matter.
Agreed.
That was Susan's point earlier, though, that he felt that sometimes families feel strongly about.
Well, I think we're, I think we're talking about intraschool choice now, what to deal with, um, you know, sending schools as another discussion point. I think it's, I think we have lots of cards on the table, so I think with intraschool choice, it should be if you came from Bennington or going to Shasbury now currently and you're a fifth grader there and you have a s- child who is going to start kindergarten next year, that child should overlap with his sibling in sixth grade. Um, so the kindergarten and sixth grader should be together next year.
So let me reiterate the motion that I'm hoping somebody will make, please. That, that students who currently enjoy intraschool choice will be allowed to remain in their current schools until their terminal grade and any of the siblings of those current intraschool choice students who reach elementary school age and also enjoy intraschool choice, yes. Why do they can provide?
Provide, yes, thank you, provide their space in the classroom?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, no, because I think it can't be automatic.
Well, because it's.
We have denied siblings before because there isn't space, it's not automatic.
But the space thing, if we know the kids are coming, we know the kid's coming, if that kid in fifth grade in Shasbury, there's a sibling coming next year, we know that kid's coming. It'd be the same thing if there's a Shasbury student who has a sibling and if there's not enough for them.
We don't necessarily know that they would be coming, you know, because we don't know what parents' choice would be, you know.
Can I entertain, I, I, I would say, so can I? No, that's all right, that's all right, yeah. Uh, so can I have a motion, please, that students who currently enjoy intraschool choice may continue to do so until they reach their terminal year? Until the terminal year.
Well, until matriculation.
Sure, until the matriculation is terminated. Thank you, Scott, do we have a second on that, thank you, Crystal. Any further discussion on that piece of it? Very good, all those in favor of that piece of it, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye. So, okay, great, so we're gonna step forward.
Can I just explain the term terminal word, it's be, terminal word, because.
Yes, I was doing an airplane.
How many schools ended sixth, sixth grade and some ended fifth, so that's why we used that term when we wrote the school choice.
So now there's the question of, of siblings. So, anyone who wants to make a motion and to advance this can, because there are lots of issues, there are lots of factors that we're, that we've been considering, so I will just put it out there. I would like to make a motion that any sibling of a school-aged student at an elementary school who's there by choice can continue at that school through their elementary career to termination, provided the families can provide transportation. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Would you like to second?
I'll second it.
Okay, very good, first and a second, any further conversation on the motion?
Um, just the conversation I don't have is are we talking about, you know, non district students as well?
No, 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 this is strictly intraschool choice as we defined at the beginning of this conversation.
We already ended intraschool choice, that's done, so now Scott put on the table siblings. So we had to just clarify whether it's intraschool siblings?
Yes.
Or is that, that's what you're saying, Scott?
Oh, wait, wait a minute, so the, the sibling of a, call it North Bennington student at Shasbury, sorry, I was lumping that, I was, I was including that in there, okay. If there are currently, if there is a, yes, so, in, as inter.
Yeah, I would probably disagree with that unless you did a class size, particularly for those who are not member, not, Union Elementary School District. We, you know, we can, we can politely disagree on that, but I'm, I know with my conversations with principals, as we struggle particularly with kindergarten numbers in some schools, to say that somebody gets an automatic pass into that kindergarten, regardless of they're in the district or out of the district. We wouldn't normally say yes to them anyways. It's always been on, on a space available basis, so.
So, so with that said, we, we do have a motion that's been made and seconded on the floor, so any further discussion on the motion, which is?
I have one more point I'd like to bring up, let's, will the language reading brother and sister, because there's many times where a cousin comes to live with a family, what happens that?
It would be a sibling.
A sibling.
That, that will.
No, he's considered a sibling.
Perfect.
No, that would not be considered a sibling.
Oh, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, I understand as a cousin as a sibling.
And therefore a swoop.
I understand, I, I understand the, the, like disagreement. I, I, I can't, I can't let myself, I can't get over the, the, the fact that we've got, we currently got kids who are our neighbors in some of our schools. I have to think quite few and will be getting fewer pretty quickly, but in our schools that, um, it would be a tremendous hardship for somebody to drop those kids off at two different school buildings and they should be part of this, they should be part of this group, and I.
But that is their choice, they chose to do that, to send the student that child, and I, and you're, you're seeing this from Shasbury's point of view. I'm seeing this monument that has overwhelmed kindergarten numbers, that has school choice students and what your vote is gonna say is we gotta take anybody who's a sibling into those, into the kindergarten classes for the next four to five years.
In fairness, they chose to do that because they could, because we didn't have a policy.
Right.
And we've, we, that, we made this bed. You have to let them move through it before, and get out of it before we can remake it.
We made the bed with intraschool choice. The Shasbury ID district has been there a lot longer than whatever this board did.
But we accepted these students into our bed, into, into.
Always on, always on a per-opening basis, whether there was an open form. There was never a guarantee that just because one sibling gets in, that you can get in regardless of whether there was space or not.
It's always gone to the board and it's up to the board to make the decision, that's as a Shasbury board member, we had that talk before where we overridden and allowed students in.
Maybe the Shasbury board, and I don't ever remember that, but certainly the Union Elementary Board has never voted on that.
Well, then I would like to say that, then I would like to say that for this time, where there is a current student in one of these buildings and there's a sibling that's coming up through and they, they go through that same process until termination and then it's all over. And it won't ever happen again.
So there are. Are we saying we're not gonna take Shasbury ID students ever again, because it would continue forever as that's, you know, it would continue.
I think he's talking about something like calling.
The sibling, the sibling part only, I'm, I'm just trying to help the family that currently is going to Shasbury that is going to have a kindergartner starting next year and isn't going to be able to go drop off at, at two, or at least wants to apply to not have to drop off at two locations next year, and then when they're aged through, it's over.
So I'm guessing how, where is the, where does this completely end then, the sibling preference?
When, when they're.
And I guess part of the, because we're, we're continuing to mix intraschool choice and so like, so are we clear that for intraschool choice students, the sibling preference will go away once the senior student has moved on, right?
So, so let's, let's.
So that will have a definite ending to that, right?
Right, yeah, so Jim, Jim, let me, I'm gonna jump in, uh, so, so Scott, I'm gonna ask you to, to maybe simplify the motion with the idea that there could be two separate motions. So we have, because what we're talking about, we're talking about intras, again, using the definitions I proposed at the beginning, and this is taking way longer than the twenty-five, that's all, that's all.
But it's an important issue.
Yeah, so, so intraschool choice as defined by ESD student attending another ESD school. And then there's the non-ESD student choice. All those kids who are, who whose families pay taxes to North Bennington are the non-ESD choice kids, and we can talk about that in just a second. But for the purpose of moving this along into offering clarity piece by piece, would you be willing to, to amend your motion to just address ESDs, to intraschool choice first and then to make a separate motion to address the non-ESD choice kids? Yes. Okay, thank you. So what would you like to move in terms of intraschool choice? For intraschool choice ESD students, I'd like to make a motion that we allow these students to fin, be grandfathered in and finish their, their, their time at the elementary school that they're at and any sibling also be allowed to go through that elementary school, assuming there's, there's two in the same building and the family can provide transportation. Perfect, thank you. Can we have a second to that?
I'll second.
Thank you, Susan, so any discussion about that piece? Okay, all those in favor of, Sandy, or did you?
I, I think I'm, okay.
Okay, so, all those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you care, it's great, so now we're left with those students whose families pay school taxes to some other district other than the ESD. And the floor is open for anyone to make a motion to address this. I would like to make a motion that we follow a similar path as we did with intraschool choice and grandfather students who are currently as part of an elementary school to finish their, their time at that elementary school and a sibling who would be in that school at the same time be allowed to go through that elementary school until, assuming the families can provide transportation. Okay. Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, first and a second, so I, I think we've heard the pros, we've heard the cons so far, does anyone have another or a new perspective or different perspective to, to share?
Yeah, I am concerned for Woodford that they have seats that are tuitioned in and that helps their student body overall for the numbers, so that they can help to maintain their school setting as long as they so choose, so.
I think that's a different, that's a.
But it's such a different.
Siblings with tuition. I think we want to do a tuition in policy which will still apply at, you know, so that'd be new tuition ins. So this is siblings, non-sending districts or non-operating districts with siblings in the current schools of ours. And then I think the next motion would be, what do we do with future siblings or future children who are going to be sent to these schools?
So Sandy, can I ask a question, are you envisioning, the, if, if the motion that Scott made is voted in, are you envisioning that somehow affecting the, the kids who?
Yeah, it sounds like we're done, like this is it.
No, we're talking about.
Tuition, is it separate then?
Yeah, I, I think what we're talking about is grandfathering in siblings, that's what we're talking about.
He broke it down, he broke it out of the, uh, his motion, so there's nothing in this action that would prevent Woodford from taking students from Sand, Sandgate.
Or other schools.
Or other, right, right.
Read far.
What difference would make them if they were siblings or not?
Because there's the question of giving preference to the siblings that, yeah, which is, which is not necessarily going to be a factor for Woodford.
Sandy, what is made, they would be not students from the Union Elementary District going to Woodford.
Right.
That, that, that's, if that's what you're asking, I'm not, so that, that's been eliminated by the first vote. Anybody from the Union Elementary District who is there can stay. This vote, anyone who has a sibling that would be coming in at the same time that they were there, could attend, but it. But it, it's, it's got nothing about if North Bennington wanted to send a student to Sandgate, I mean to, uh, Woodford or Sandgate or Reesboro or anybody that was not part of the Union Elementary District could tuition a student there.
That's exactly right. Thank you. That's, that's what we're tuitioning in students. That's what I'm referring to.
So on that, on that concern?
So in your scenario, it's siblings get preference if their older siblings there until that sibling is out. And then it's just tuitioned. Okay, yep.
So first and a second.
Transportation.
Right.
So any further discussion or questions or thoughts? Okay. So we've heard the pros, we've heard the cons. All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two, three, four, five, six. All opposed? Raise your hand. Aye. Would you care? Okay. Is there any other piece of this that we haven't yet addressed?
I do think there's one more.
Okay.
Um, I've heard about space. And I don't know that this is a policy. I think maybe it's an, it's a, it's a request for clarity. Um, I've heard about space and I've also heard about um, inter-school placement? Where students from one school are perhaps placed in a different school for one reason or another. And I don't know the extent to which that happens, but um, I think it's something that I, as a board member, I'd like to learn a little bit more about. You know, could be a number of reasons why it might be the case, but I think we, I, I, it's something I don't know anything about and it's something that I'd like to, to learn more about.
Scott, you mean tonight learn more about or can we put it on another?
No, no, we can, we can talk about it.
Yeah, okay. But I'm, yeah, like how, yeah, whether like Student Sports Services might have placed somebody in another school because deemed the smaller environment was more appropriate or something. Yeah, we, we could address. And as far as capacity, you know, we strive for educational equality standards of what size a class should be. So we could address that too. So I'll put that for a future agenda item.
Great. So, yeah, Sandy.
Sorry, before we go forward, so going forward, we are going to create a tuition in policy.
I think that policy exists. I think the procedure exists.
It's a, it's a.
It's an archive, okay. So yeah, so let's.
Of the individual schools instead of collectively, guys.
Okay, yeah. So yes, let, let's do that to make sure that it works.
Thank you.
Um, hey, good morning, buddy.
Okay.
Okay.
Pretty fun.
Did all agree, agreed with this excellent. Okay, so that brings us to the next agenda item, which is S B S U report now. Now returning any of our S B S U reps to take the floor. Tell us what's been happening at the, the larger supervisor union level.
Uh, I can give an update. The last meeting that we had was very much budget oriented. Um, and so you can imagine the discussions that happened in that meeting are similar to what we've had in our last one. And probably what we'll have in this next section here. So beyond that, not, not much else.
Okay.
And we need again tomorrow night to continue the budget discussion.
Fun.
Yeah, it will be more than that.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Um, so moving on to agenda item seven, policies. Uh, we have a two to warn, uh, one to adopt. So the ones to warn are A and C, which are concussion management, fifty-one-twenty and the dress code five-zero-eight-zero. Now we talked about the dress code before and then if I don't know that all of the law would be intended necessarily to place. So I would, uh, what I'd like to do is to table the order of the dress code. We can circle back to it at the next meeting. I don't think that's, that's a huge deal. And I would ask that if people have, if members of the board have specific concerns, they would like to see addressed. If they can just forward those to me in an email, please, so that we can come prepared, have a meaningful conversation about the dress code, that. So I'd, I'd like to table five-zero-eight-zero, but I would entertain a motion to warn five-one-two-zero, please, which is the draft concussion management policy.
Especially first just.
I'd like a motion first to see if we're gonna. Yeah, a motion to, a motion to warn it, then we can discuss the motion.
A second.
Okay, first and a second, very good. What kind of discussion should we have about concussion man?
Um, I remember that in our, when we spoke about that tour, that Jeff specifically brought up uh, something about the, the protocol who decides that there was a concussion. And even though it's shared in the policy, who could, it didn't state actually what the protocol may be. And that's why we, I thought we had tabled it for your next meeting, which I understand was canceled.
Uh, okay, so.
It looks like, I don't know if you added this, um, because they, they do have that line. I think it just had docs before. That this may include the athletic trainer which serves a high school or other healthcare professionals or providers licensed permanent to Title Twenty-Six.
Jeff, I'm sorry, what page and, what page and line number are you referring to this?
Page two-two, uh, so it's page two, the concussion and it's line four.
Thank you.
You know, so it looks like, you know, they, they have that in there. Um, you know, the athletic trainer which does the high school concussion and other healthcare providers licensed under Title Twenty-Six. Just not sure what Title Twenty-Six is. So if that's like a school that follows nurse, then that should.
And she is, I'm sorry, Jeff, is it?
Yeah, I got that trip that covers the nurse or not in the building.
It shares who the licensed healthcare professionals are, but it doesn't share who is going to determine that there was a concussion.
And the four other healthcare providers, I assume. That's, that's the, because can, because I think we have this, you know, can the school nurse say you have a concussion? That's what we're looking at. And can they diagnose a concussion? A nurse can't diagnose. So who can diagnose a concussion is the question.
And it doesn't, unless you see it, unless I'm missing it in a line, I don't see that it specifically shares.
No, an athletic trainer can because they're trained to do concussion protocols. But I'm not sure if a school nurse can say you've had a concussion. Um, can they make that? And I mean, under most, you need a medical license to determine that and a nurse can't do that, I don't think.
But in the policy itself, it does not specify who, you know, that we do want this licensed healthcare professional to determine that. It shares who is a licensed healthcare.
Yep.
So I, I, we're a little removed from the policy committee meeting, so I don't remember, but um, I don't know if Chris or Laura know, but this is not our language, correct? This is, um, the Vermont School Board Association?
The nurses, uh, the nurses brought it forward and we can, again, get the exact language and it was by our.
Yeah, we did not, we did not draft this right. This was the, either the nurses or the Vermont School Board Association model policy. So I think we will, we can inquire on.
So with the understanding that there, that there may be some, uh, the understanding that maybe we don't quite understand this, given the fact that it's been, it's been propagated by the V S, uh, Vermont School Board Association and it's been, it's been reviewed by legal. Um, and given all the other very important things we have in our agendas tonight, what I'd like to do is, is I'll give folks the opportunity to withdraw the motion to warn. I mean, not hearing any, I'd like just to move forward. And if we choose not to warn it, we choose not to warn. That's okay. We can do that. Uh, but I'd like to, to keep the agenda moving forward so we can get our principals, we want to be respectful of their time. And we have a big old thing called a budget we need to figure out as well. Um, so for the folks who made the motion to warn this particular policy, uh, do you wish to keep that motion on the floor?
I wish to withdraw.
Okay.
I would withdraw too.
Okay, so we have, um, so let's table the concussion management. Then we do have the adoption of policy five-zero-eight-four, which has made the rounds. Um, I would entertain a motion to adopt five-zero-eight-four as published, please. So, thank you, Scott. Thanks, Lynn. First and a second, uh, any discussion on that? Hearing on all those in favor of approving five-zero-eight-four as published, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Very good. Any opposed? Any extensions? Okay, that motion passes. Thanks. Okay, now principal reports. Okay, so, uh, Principal Killery, uh, Dr. Royo, you can forward it to yours, please.
Uh, hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, everybody in Zoom world. I'm Terry Killery, the principal at Molly Stark Elementary School. Um, this is by no means a comprehensive list, all the great things we're doing this year. Uh, but that was a kind of a snapshot of what we're doing. We started our fifth grade leadership program, which gives opportunities for fifth graders to apply for positions in, or the school to help out teachers, help out the recycling and any new initiatives they have. Um, that has gone off the ground and running. We're also meeting learners where they're at, uh, connecting them to available appropriate resources. Our clinicians and our social worker and our counselors meet every week. Kind of get, if they get referrals from teachers, they go over those, um, and try to match them up with the services they provide. Um, and then if they know other things, they can bring it up to the teachers and it's just a good way for everyone to get around the table and make sure we're on the same page in offering, uh, those supports that some students need. And then we also have the reading interventionists. We have one of our reading interventions in the room right now, Mr. King. They're doing a great job. Uh, we're fully staffed this year, um, and they're starting the year, uh, running and they're getting all their classrooms they need to do. They're doing all their progress monitoring and it's, it's been great to watch them in action. Um, we have a new math coach and a new literacy coach and they're also rolling up their sleeves from day one and working with those two new teachers that we have and the, uh, returning teachers that we have and the veteran teachers that have been there for a long time. Um, so it's just been a real lot of buzz going on in that area of the building. Um, our teacher mentorship program has also been taking off. We've had quite a few new teachers this year. So I think every teacher is either a mentor or a mentee at this point. Um, which is great because a lot of the returning teachers have to really kind of uh, reflect on what their practices that really mean, best practices they have that they can pass along. They get chances to sit in classrooms, observe. Um, and it kind of builds the morale of the, the staff at the school. Uh, and we're all in this together. Um, let's try to get the ship going in the right direction. Ship, that's what I said. Uh, the other thing. Uh, creating parents, we're also, uh, our family engagement nights, we have those monthly. We have one coming up Thursday. We're gonna do rocks, I think, and those numbers are, we've been getting greater and greater. Uh, different families are reaching out. Um, so that's great to see. Uh, we're actively recruiting for the P T G meeting. We had one last night. It's every second Monday. Um, they were very helpful in getting our new Gaga pit. Um, because they raised funds for it. It took us a long time to find the get it, but myself and some students were able to put it in the ground and, uh, it's, the kids love it every single, it's a, it's a great game. Um, and then, I'm probably taking up too much time, our monthly assemblies, um, every month we try to bring in some group community members. Uh, we're hoping to work within cares on that too. Uh, I think that's gonna be a great resource. And then, um, we've also done the Trump retreat in the, the fall. We had our winter bazaar, um, ways for people that came to come and see the Molly Stark is thriving and doing very well. Uh, we've also done staff events to build school culture, potlucks are more frequent than they were. Uh, we've also did a winter gathering last week where the staff is able to meet outside of school hours and see each other, uh, in a different light. Um, we also have a sunshine committee, which is, uh, people donate money to like get, um, cards for if there's a pregnancy or if there's a, a death in the family, a bereavement. Um, something that shows that everyone at the school is thinking of you during those good times for the pregnancies or maybe the, uh, rough times for deaths. Um, Betty cares is already mentioned, but I'm really looking forward to work, working that relationship and, um, it just seemed a lot of big ideas and I don't want to see those come to fruition. Uh, after school clubs that we're doing, uh, those are really fun. We have a walking club, a knitting club, uh, after school P E, uh, lots of great stuff going on there. And then we have a new set of clubs coming up for the winter when we come back in January. We have our winter concert coming up in January at the high school. Thank you, uh, Principal Payne for allowing us to go up there. And last thing is what we want, we want to do more collaboration with Benell. Uh, we're talking to Dr. Royo and ourselves, but like do some kind of like maybe like Molly Stark staff versus Benell staff and students, kind of like those soccer games or something. In the spring, like it's nice. Um, that's, yeah, that's not by all, any means a comprehensive list and I apologize if there's any staff members and I did not highlight something great that's going on in your classroom. Um, but yeah, there's a lot of great things happening in Molly Stark.
Well, 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 if you're just meeting me, I'm obnoxiously optimistic. So rather than me say how great it is, I sent an email to people today, right, to say, hey, tell us what's going on, right? So people sent some emails, some, some messaging here and, you know, starting out with opportunities for field trips. We've really started some field trips. Students have gone to the farms and museums, to the libraries and and whether they're walking or busing, we're really starting to, to really expand our horizon as it relates to the, the field trip options. We've had, uh, our fifth grade class do some Bennington, uh, work at the Bennington Museum and, and using a fundraising event there. They painted rocks and, and really did things that are really just wonderful and, and shows the connection to the community and, and to the environment with which they live. We're, uh, having a classroom door decorating contest and it's, it's our holidays around the world and some holidays represented are Ramadan and Hanukkah and Christmas and Lunar New Year and winter solace and the lolly and, and various, uh, winter celebrations throughout the year. And we'll have a parade of, uh, doors coming up soon within the next, uh, next week sometime. And speaking of parade, during our, uh, Benell's first Thanksgiving float parade, we have students incorporate STEM into decorated floats and balloons. We have those displayed in the library next year. We're hoping to have some movement within those, you know, that connected to science and, and really build on, on, on the excitement that's starting. I'm rousing at an all-time high from what I hear. That's, that's my line. And then someone was typing it in after I saw that. And they wrote, I second this, not from what I hear, from what I experience every day. So that's really nice. We built our, our, our support team to really provide students with an outlet for safe and nurturing environment. Not only teachers, but you know, behavior counselors and, and social workers and clinicians and, and family members. And then really giving those opportunities for people to, to just be better people. Um, so the monkey environment, the environment this year feels more supportive and positive. I look forward to coming to work. Oh, not as much subs needed, right? We love that. Uh, Dr. Royo has made Benell, uh, come together as a team. So apparently he's doing an okay job. And, um, their connection to, uh, Bennington cares, they asked what we want. And I said, well, is anyone interested in subbing? So, you know, we're, we're working on just building those connections to people and having people come in and help people, right? And, and, and if someone cares that much, well then come on down and care a little more, right? So that's where that connection is with, uh, with Bennington cares. Our giving tree is up and giving in the main foyer. So we, uh, it's not a Christmas tree, it's a giving tree. It's decorated with socks and and goodies and, and hats and gloves and, and students are taking them. Students are bringing food in and putting them in the basket and it's amazing for a community that is struggling with food insecurities, how much food is being donated by these very same families because they care about one another. So that really is just more proof of, of how robust we really are. Uh, Benell alum and former educators coming into the building to exclaim how positive the vibe is in the building. New staff members are working to build great relationships with all stakeholders. The recruiting and hiring practices within the building have provided for a more diverse staff. Special thanks to uh, my mentor, uh, Principal Qualley, who was assisted with providing, uh, um, one of our, one of our newest and, and most effective paraprofessionals to come into the building and really work with us. So thank you for that, Ms. Qualley, for that. We really do appreciate you and, and they are doing, and he is doing such a great job. So special shout out to her for, for that collegiality. We really thank you for that. Stakeholder input has increased and not just complaints, by the way, right? That's always good. Stakeholder complaints isn't really great engagement. It's informative, but not great engagement. But we have stakeholders coming in and wanting to be a part of us and really, and really trying to help us and, and asking what things they can do to help make Benell a better place. Um, and school programming is robust. You know, we're, we're, we're bursting at the seams for that. And, and it's really fantastic. We have over a hundred kids in our after school program for our next program coming up. We do have our, uh, winter, we, we had our, we had our, um, Friendsgiving party at, um, uh, Madison, Madison Brewing and, you know, was, it was, it was lightly uh, received. So we only have a few people, but now that we're having our Friendsmas on December twenty-first at Runto's, three-thirty to five-thirty, please come. And you're all invited and, and, and people are already excited about that opportunity just to build on that, you know? And, you know, we have, we, we just have people that are at work. We have people smiling. There's music. There's laughter. You know, is there a tough time? Are there tough times? Of course there are. You know, I'd be lying if I said there aren't. But people are coming to work. People are happy to be at work. People are saying thank you. You know, people walk into the building, whether it's a board member or if it's again, an alum or just a parent and they say they hear happiness in the hallways. And, and, and that's a testament to the wonderful people at Bennington Elementary. So I can't be, I cannot be more honored than to say that I'm the principal there. But more importantly, I can't say more that I'm happy to be a Benell member of the family. And, and, you know, everyone's invited. That I'm happy to be a Benell member of the family and and you know, everyone's invited to come visit. We'll never just scurry you into the office, we'll let you walk around and see what's happening, it may be crazy, it may be fun, but it's our home, so you're all welcome and and it's so much fun and again. With Terry and and trying to make uh you know, some sort of cross district stuff, talk, we we invited our um. Our STEM director in to talk about some STEM stuff so that we can get a a science fair or something like that going, so. You know, we're 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 ready to go, we're ready to go and 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 we're only at what seventy days in or something like that, I count up, I don't count down. So the fact that we're seventy days in, seven zero-ish days in and um. Yeah, yeah, we're great, we're doing great, it's it, I will say this and I'll end on this note. I've heard from people that have dealt with either the police department or the uh rescue squad and they said, hey, Todd, we haven't had any calls from Benell this year. We're doing something right.
Thank you so much, any question for our other, our our uh highlighted principals, Ben? Well, thank you very much. So that brings us to agenda item nine, the superintendent's report, Superintendent Colquinn.
Superintendent is gonna be very brief and just say, what's my superintendent's report, let's work on the budget and uh the uh I I'm. I selected these two principals to come and greet you this evening because uh you don't know them yet and you don't know the enthusiasm. Uh I hope you saw that both of them bring to their job and to their schools. And uh this will be back to being a regular feature again, so uh we will have principal reports at all future meetings, but really uh. My concentration has been with uh Renee and my other administrators on budget, so I will yield. I will take any questions but yield uh as we're getting late to budgets and I really would like to get people home, principals have had a long day.
Any questions for our superintendent? Thank you, Superintendent Colquinn, uh the chair's report will pass right by, the only thing I would add is that we are still in the midst of contract negotiations uh with the teachers union. Uh I I'm I'm optimistic, uh there's a bit of a chasm right now, we've offered a seven percent pay increase and the. Sort of the combined increases that they're looking for, we do amount to around fifteen percent, which I don't think is sustainable, but I'm confident that we can we can get to a to a good place, so. Uh more to come on that in the weeks to come. So that brings us to Director Gordon, uh to lead us in a conversation about the budget steps. Director Gordon, who is your first?
So um we do have our copies here, anybody wants, and that has been posted with tonight's agenda. Uh a little bit similar topic, a little bit different in that um so page number one goes with the narrative of pages two through four. So this is gonna be the budget by category. And then um behind that page five is your uh budget by uh function or department. Along with a four page narrative for that and then um. The final page, I I did not include the uh list of acronyms this time. Uh that's in draft one, so if you wanted, that's still up on uh on the website, um but I did include. A listing of our current F T Es with noted vacancies and or requests in this current draft budget, so that is page ten of the packet. So um we, it's only been a week, uh but we do have a couple of updates um to this. Jim, could you make me a co-host so I can? Pick this up, please? Um I figured tonight was probably gonna be a a bit more of a deeper dive into discussions of again of principals here um after our first pass through it last week. Um there's a couple of things to note, um we, the changes on the narratives are gonna be identified in blue italics. Going forward, I will keep changes in italics, I would just say the newer stuff will mostly. Okay, thank you, um newer stuff will stay blue, but other changes from previous drafts will stay in um italics. So um on the uh salaries line, so starting with uh page one and the narrative associated with pages two through four. Um we have uh removed the uh social worker uh for Benell in this draft of the budget because we have new grant opportunity on up. Um a discussion today with the A O E, we know that this is a position that we can put in this new grant opportunity for comprehensive supports. So we're gonna go ahead and and do that um going forward. Along with um those comprehensive supports, if you notice the fourth bullet down, uh I've combined the the paraprofessional requests. So six total, which is a a little bit of a change from the previous draft. Um we did have three and then another three and then contracted service to provide three, so we're down to six total. And we have eliminated from this budget, which you'll see on on the second page of their contracted services. Um the continuation of the need, basically the the contact that we have presently with um Myers-Pratt, which is providing three. Um paraprofessionals essentially supporting our alt page one programming. Um so that is currently being funded through S R, we have three staff, three Myers-Pratt staff at the. Molly Stark, we have three Myers-Pratt staff at Benell, who again through S R. What we're asking in this budget is actually to transition these to two of our own hired paraprofessionals. So we know that the S R money's going away, um but we're going to move or requesting the board approve two eras for both of those buildings. Um to support, continue to support that K one program. Uh but the professional staff that's supporting that program, we are gonna move into the comprehensive support, so a little bit further down. Um where I said the social emotional, social emotional coaches. Where the K one um interventionist actually gonna be moving into those comprehensive supports as well. So in a nutshell, that is really the the changes that you're seeing, um but the other exception of uh. The assessments that I had put in uh have been updated with the new long-term weighted A D M. Uh that came in, I think just a minute before we met last week. So that replaces our equalized pupil counts. And essentially our assessments are being allocated out proportionately between our districts by long-term weighted A D M now, so that was where a little bit of a shift. Cause it's basically our new student count. Um and then we have taken a first pass at our um. Extraordinary reimbursement for our special education, so that's a s- a small adjustment to the assessment line there as well. Couple other things just to note, um I I did not include the revenue again because that um. You have to start to take it into um the tuition and what students might be coming in. Uh what those counts look like and even what our projected cost might be, I think tonight might give us a little bit more direction or maybe over next month. Um but the tax rate calculation, again, at this point, I'm only giving you. This school district typically when we look at this, we're looking at the blended um impact of our district with Mount Anthony. Uh I don't have our common level of other reasons yet, so I haven't gone to that that extent. Uh but I do think there's a lot of things that need to be essentially flushed out in these budgets so they get to a point where I think they're a little bit more. Palatable for everybody and then we'll go ahead and merge them together, but so tonight, draft two. If you look at this column E here, estimated, so we have an estimated expenditure budget of thirty one million. Our operating revenues, very preliminary, still needs to be refined at four point eight. There's this education spending of uh twenty six million, twenty six point three million. This education spending, um you probably stick it here and we say it, but this is the demand on the education fund. This is what we're asking the state to support us with, so that education fund is funded through property taxes, it's funded through sales and these steps. There's several different ways that the the money's in there, but that is what we're asking for. We then have to take that education spending and we divide it by our long-term weighted A D M, so comparing this year. To next year, you can see the the first draft of long, long-term weighted at a daily membership. Looks like it's an increase, I will tell you that A O E is having a bit of a challenging time with their debt. Um several data sources are kind of coming together, they keep sending numbers to various people, they're they're looking, they're refining. It opened the window again for corrections, so this is now the second window for corrections um this week. So I expect this number will change. This year, with the change to long-term weighted A D M, our English learning students are weighted much more heavily. Um the first pass, I think that that you're seeing before you had our our counts under what they they were since. Um and our students living in poverty are also weighted heavier now with with the change to long-term weighted A D M, uh through Act one twenty seven. So essentially what happens when comparing this year to next, we look at our education spending per long-term weighted A D M. And with Act one twenty seven now, we know that we can't spend more than ten percent or have an increase of more than ten percent. Per long-term weighted A D M without having to go to a tax review channel, uh which is gonna be basically um established by the Secretary of Education. So the budget that you have before you right now isn't an increase, it's actually a point five percent decrease based on. What we have for a long-term weighted A D M and the budget that's before you today, so that's that's good. Uh but again, these are very preliminary, nothing's set in stone yet. Uh if that was, you know, a ten percent increase, we have to go, we have to stop. But also part of Act one twenty seven is when you actually get to the calculation of what your tax is going to be, there's a limit. For the next five years of five percent. So again, taking a look at this. The property yield, this was the number that came out from our tax commissioner. Number is significantly different, if you notice the the color change, this is what it was this year with. Equalized pupils and that's what our property yield was, with the shift, they had to readjust. So the recommendation at this point from the tax commissioner to the legislature, they, he feels. That the education fund at present would be able to support um education spending for equalized people. Nine thousand four hundred fifty-two dollars would give a one dollar base tax rate. We are over that, so we actually divide that, that gives us a base tax rate of one point two three one one compared to where it is today. It's one point two four five five, this is only the elementary district portion. So essentially what happens is we look at this and then we have to break it out by town proportionately, elementary to secondary. And then we blend those together, so essentially we'll be taking this budget, merging it with Mount Anthony. And then we'll be able to get to the individual town tax rates, but all in all, this budget that you have before you right now comparatively to the present year. Doesn't look too bad, I mean even though it's a significant increase monetarily. So that being said. That's what I have to share with you this evening, again, again, it's just, it's graph, everything's graph at this point because there's so many four pieces that I still have to kind of.
So Director Gordon, one of the takeaways um. That I took away from the from the Acts one twenty seven web power. Uh was that when districts are are seeing what would appear to be tax rate decrease, that the idea is not maybe necessarily to offer the decreased tax, but instead to use that cushion. To increase supports in the schools. That's not such a major decrease that we could necessarily do much with that, but. Do you anticipate there being enough, if we if we were to keep, you know, kind of all things the same and did not see a decrease in the tax rate. How many sorts of positions do you think could be funded with that uh drop of one cent? Pretty much, I don't.
I think, I think we 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 have in this budget what folks have pretty much asked for. So there wouldn't be anything necessarily beyond that at this point. I would say if if you're targeting potentially not having a tax decrease, we could look at that fund balance number.
Okay.
Which is a of one point four million dollar increase to our fund balance and doing what we did a couple of years ago. And taking some of that and sliding it out to basically put into a free serve fund and for those of you that aren't familiar. A few years ago, um we had a ballot article, so the voters voted. And approved that annually, the school board has the authority to essentially um examine what you have for a fund balance and then determine whether or not they wanna take part of that. And set it aside for future use, it doesn't, it didn't specifically say capital, didn't specifically say tax stabilization, it's up to the board's discretion. Uh but it is a pot of money that you could essentially use in the future, which has right now eight hundred thousand dollars left from a prior year.
Correct me if I'm wrong, please, that it is the same taxpayer and on the uh from an L from an M A U perspective. And we're not looking at a decrease.
Rest. Pretty substantial increase on the other side.
So just for what it's worth, okay.
So if I understand you correctly, we shouldn't cut because if the middle school and high school are gonna do more for their schools, we should follow?
No, I'm saying. Yeah, I like to spend though.
So one of the things, I mean, we have two brand new principals that may not have been involved in this. Um so I'm hoping that there's an opportunity for us to look at the schools, to make sure there is equity between schools. Um as far as personnel, as far as support, um because until we actually look at it, you know. We don't know if um the balance is is equal.
Yeah, I, my perspective, I I don't know that I I wouldn't be. I feel like that's where the the superintendent and working with administrators comes in and makes sure that there's the equity or or. Equity's an interesting word, it's what's needed, right? But based on the, based on the building.
As we like to say, equity does not mean equal. Um I know it's a catchy little phrase, but uh it's true, you know. Simple like, say, okay, you have a hundred students, you get one power, so you got a school of two hundred, so then you get two powers, now there's other factors that would would go into that. But you do have staffing levels were given to you this evening, right? You have that in your packet, so.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the final page of the packet, um it's a little difficult. But just a note, but just to kind of qualify what this is that you have before you. This is just um local staff, so it's all the folks that are basically being funded in this budget. Exclusive of student services. Because it's, students' earnings is so large and a lot of folks that are partially funded either and then we have people that kind of split. And they move here, they're they're here part of the day, they're here part of it, it's really difficult to to specifically say, you know, Benell has a point two five. School psychologist on Tuesdays and Wednesdays, I mean, that's how crazy it it would get, so. Essentially what you have here is locally funded to the folks that are in your budget and your local parapounds um that are at the bottom. Uh the bottom row, but it's it's giving you all the F T Es, notes and any vacant positions that we have. Um these two vacancies over here, the district wide, we have those slated to be filled with our family engagement specialist, that's the one of the proposals that we have in this budget before you. Um and then the requested positions um are here in in blue, increases in um music, we increased to the custodian panel. And requested one point oh maintenance person um in uh District One. So there are a lot more people in your buildings, it doesn't make, doesn't make, couldn't have counted the contracted services either. These are just the the staff, essentially the salaries that you're seeing, your salary and your benefits lines, these are the people, the F T Es that are in here. With the exception of the very bottom line, the paras, that's coming through in the assessment line because those are S V S V positions.
I have one question, um and this may be too much of a crystal ball. Question for anybody to answer, I'm not okay, but when I see a thirty. A thirty-four percent increase and um special education combined with attendance, social work services. And those two lines, um and I recognize fully the importance and the need for those positions. Uh and the and the type of increase that we're seeing. Um it's also probably maybe the two hardest areas for a taxpayer to get their head around. Because it's so different than when most of them went to school. And so I think my, the root of my question is, do we feel as though? Does the administration feel as though? does the administration feel as though this is something that's needed to get kids to experience something that was really unprecedented through the system? And in four years, we could be looking at seeing that number go down by twenty percent? Because we've gotten them through the system, the kids that are coming in are getting all of the things that they were, that we were used to prior to the pandemic. And now we're, this is just, we've got to take our lumps, we've got to get through it. The federal money has run out. It's going to move through with the kids or are we seeing something more fundamental that is, it's going to be a six million dollar line lasting, lasting for so unfinished?
From my perspective, Scott, I agree. It's a, it's a very crystal bally kind of question. I think whenever money is spent on intervention, the hope is that the intervention is going to pay off, that the intervention is not necessarily. I do think that, but I think there's so many factors outside of the school day that contribute to that, but then, yeah, I think it's really hard to answer that.
Do we have any children that we have to place outside of our school in different programs?
Yes.
That too, and that is expensive.
And it's a, it's a, it's a driver, partially the increase that you're seeing in that special education line. But we also have one that's locally funded, so it's not a student on, it's projected to be needing that placement again next year, potentially. So that is in the budget as well.
Because I know we did have some students that had to be replaced and put in a special school or a special program outside of the school, what they have. Not certain specialized kids, needs that can be met in school.
Director Warren, could you just say, this might be a good time to say it, but more about the expert parent, the first type of special ed students. But that would be helpful for me at least to hear more about that, if that means.
So, okay, all, all of those costs are carried at the SU level. So the special educators or the programs that they're in, I can use NECC for example. NECC is the New England Center for Children, our autism program. We have four classrooms at the elementary level. We have four classrooms at the middle and high school level in Mount Anthony. We essentially look and work with our student services department, student by student, to identify what we're projecting the cost of their services to be in the next year. So we would take the cost of the NECC classroom, most of them are costing us two hundred thousand dollars plus. They're providing a teacher and then intermittent behavior supports. We also have para professionals assigned to each of them, so we take that cost. If any of those students are receiving OT, PT, speech, on top of that, we're factoring in all those costs. We also look at transportation costs if they're specialized, essentially to drive to a dollar figure per student. A threshold, which we haven't received yet, so I just have a projection in here now that I'm hoping that it's going to be less. But presently, for the current year, sixty-six thousand two hundred and six dollars is the threshold. So we are paying up to that point. Once we get over that, the state is reimbursing us ninety-five percent of the costs in excess of that. So, you know, students that we have had in not, not this district, but, well, probably this district, but now at the high school level and residential, you know, those are half a million dollar placements. So there's some, some kids that don't make it up there and then others that, that do see that drastically.
On this
If it sounds like we're not being as specific as we're likely to remember, we're cautious about not identifying any students. And I'm trying to be in a budget meeting as far as, you know, telling you specifically to like Susan, you know, where is the out of district placement and where they're going and all, I, yes, we have students now. Right, but I just, for those who may not have been through this process before, I just wanted to remind everybody of that, that that's why we're talking more in general terms of these costs.
Renee, if I understand correctly, the reading teachers are locally funded, they're not part of
These are positions that have been, it's moved into a local budget. You do have, again, this again, is not inclusive of your grant positions at the SVSC level either. So there are many other schools have interventionist, some have more of one interventionist, coaches, special educators, like, you know, lots of other staff, yes, that are represented here. It's just your local, local positions.
Director Warren, could you just outline, please, what you need from this board and what the timeline is for getting some of these figures worked up, please?
So, yes, the, the first thing that will need to happen is the SVSC board is going to need to, you know, kind of finalize their budget once that's done. And we have all the information from the agency. I can lock those assessments in essentially. At tomorrow night's SVSC meeting, I'll be looking at assessments, looking at, you know, the second pass of the, of the budget as well. From there, hopefully, early next month, we'll be able to look at what this budget looks like in basically collection with Mount Anthony. And by town, typically, it's late December when we get the letters from the property tax, property valuation department of the state, which essentially gives us our common level of appraisal for each town. Because that factors into what our projected tax rates will be. So I'll have, hopefully have that data by the end of the month. And then essentially, we will have to set a budget and then warm the budget with the other ballot articles. If that was going to be the case, has to be posted between January twenty-fifth and February fourth to meet the requirements in the law. For town meeting in March.
So would, would you, would it be helpful if we held another budget meeting the first week of January or can we wait till the ninth? Which would be our typical meeting?
Yeah. Because one, one thing that is also up, and it goes back to like a question we received from Scott early before the meeting, and the work is not done on facility lists. You know, I, I had been working with Holly Anderson on this, and the master plan is still in progress. And she's still updating it, and I've asked for cuts in what she's asking for from Molly Stark and Bennington Elementary School. They're all in need, but it also can't all happen in one year. It, it's, it's great that we're listing all those projects. And one other way that the budget may get reduced in the next draft is we're going to look and see what that she has listed could actually happen in this budget cycle with money that we have this year in the budget. So that would come out of the budget and also some of the projects would get, I told her specifically, I don't want to defer maintenance, but I also want to plan on a timeline for larger projects so that, one, we know it's coming, but we know how much budget year it can, so that there's, i- i- in my estimation, there are too many projects listed in this year's budget. And, you know, Scott, you had questioned that and, and I agree with you. So we don't have that, we don't have that tonight, and I say that for Holly, who I, I let her leave early for her daughter's concert, because I did, I do think that particularly in this season, you know, family comes first, so her apologies for not being here, but I did let her go, so. But that is, there is so much more work to be done. Renee, I know you were working on that list with her too, so.
And the other thing, Chris, to note too, is that, you know, while we look at this and it, it appears not to be, you know, doom and gloom when you, you look at the bottom line, no potential tax decrease for just this district. This is a statewide system, right? So even though it looks okay for us, the average demand on that education fund, I think it's been estimated to be, you know, somewhere in the neighborhood of like eight to ten percent, but from other districts, we're well over that. So anything that we do that goes over that is going to drive that property yield number down, which is going to drive the tax rate up. So we, we have to keep spending in mind, regardless of how all the other factors are kind of playing into it. It's they, they keep reminding us in all of our, you know, meetings at the state level, this is a statewide system. That we don't necessarily have control over all of those pieces.
So sort of to that, I, I, I think I mentioned for the, the AOE and the Cross-School Board Association, particularly a great webinar on Act one twenty-seven, which outlines all the massive changes in school funding, which was already a beast to wrap their head around. I'd encourage you to check that out. If you need the web address, reach out to me. You can also certify it on the VSB, yeah, the, the V S B A website. It's, it's, it's worthwhile. It's worthwhile watching. It's about forty-five minutes, so there's another forty-five minutes worth of conversation. So check it out if you have any questions. So in terms of scheduling, are we good with just readdressing this on the ninth with the typical meeting or the E D meeting?
I, I think that ninth will be okay, because I suspect that the SVSC will probably be looking to meet that first week. You know, it'll, it'll give me some time to get that worked together.
Okay.
You don't need to warn it on the ninth.
No, it's our typical meeting night, yeah. I mean, we'll warn it the way we always warn it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Use my special voice. Like, I need to draw up a document too for everybody to sign as well.
I have one question that will take just a minute. As you explained, we've given us thirteen, they said categories here, but so there's thousands of lines. Can you see the lines?
Yeah.
In electronic form, of course.
Yes.
And I think everybody would benefit from having, you know, the information, and if you have the time to look at each line. You know, there's, we, we have a lot of responsibilities sitting here. I'd like to have a little more education about it.
Yeah, I do, I want to point out that that used to happen, and Renee is only responding to what boards before her asked and preferred in their reports. More, more consolidation, broader strokes, so it's up to the board to decide what, how they want that report, but
Can I offer, offer an intermediate possibility?
That would be wonderful.
It basically, because I've done this at the, the SU level, it is essentially taking your, your budget by function, so all of these categories. And then I break that out with these. So basically, each one of these lines has a subset of these. Maybe that might be a little bit more digestible as opposed to twenty-two hundred lines of budget. And that'll still probably be, you know, a seven-page document, but yeah. Thank you. I actually, I can take that. I will, I'll get the, the version that I have posted tonight. I'll, I'll put that together and just have it reposted through the agenda, so it'll be tapped on to the, the end of it.
Good, great. Any other questions for Director Warren?
Is it any possible way that, I mean, I love this local, on the columns, is there any way to also add the numbers of support people who are on the, so we have an idea of each school's
Sandy, you're cutting out on me. I don't know if it's my, I couldn't hear what you're asking.
I'm asking for each, for a breakout. Next, I love that this is broken up like this. My question is, is it possible to have a second column as well to give us an idea of the alternatively funded adults and staff that are part of the building? For money.
Renee, do you understand what she's asking or do you need clarity?
It's all, it's all the SU positions that we, yeah, I mean, I, I understand, but I think it's going to be incredibly difficult because we have so many people that serve so many buildings and I don't necessarily, I have them funded at an SU level. I don't have them allocated by building.
So that's something that I'd love to handle. Just, just in getting a clearer picture of, of the, the staff allocations.
I can tell you in total how many we have, but by building, it's really difficult.
I heard it should be funded by the SU board, so okay.
In sharing of staff between buildings too.
I mean, I, I have staff that are, you know, they're in Arlington, they're here. We have some staff that, you know, are funded through a grant that are serving our students that are forensically placed Grace Christian School and Sacred Heart. Like, so they're, these are our employees, but they're serving kids everywhere.
Totally different.
Right, but I don't have them necessarily identified naturally because they're all at this, like, higher level.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much for, for all the work that goes into managing this. Lots of pain for that. So that's, that's
She does it tomorrow night with the SU and Thursday night we'll be doing it with Sandgate.
Excellent, all right. So thank you. So that exhausts our agenda. I just wish everyone happy and peaceful, warm holidays, whatever you celebrate, whatever you hardly celebrate. And we had a motion to adjourn. Don't move.
Thanks, Scott.
All this, first and second session. All those in favor of adjourned, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
Any votes, any objections, we adjourn.